Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Birmingham, and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council, July 27, 2021. We're going to have our invocation by Counselor Clinton Woods and our Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Williams. For one complete stand, good morning.
Good morning. All right, bow your heads. Dear only Father, Lord, we thank you for another opportunity to serve this morning, Lord. We ask that you watch over us, Lord, as we try to make the best decisions that we can to lead this city, Lord. We ask that you watch over each and every resident of this city, Lord. Keep us safe as we try to clear ourselves from the pandemic, Lord. Keep us safe in this heat. Just give us the ability to come together, work together for the betterment of this city. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
How are you all?
Counselor Member Abbott. Counselor Member Hilliard. Counselor Member Hoyt.
Present.
Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Member Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Member Williams.
Good morning, Ms. President.
Good morning, Counselor Member Woods. Counselor President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Counselor President Parker.
Good morning. Good morning. The minutes are not ready for May 4 through July 20 of 2021. Good morning, Chief. How are you?
Morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
Madam Protem, members of the council, and members of the public. There's no mayor's report this morning, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief Sparks, real quick, I want to suspend the rules real quick. Wanted Ms. Mindy and Chris from the Alabama Restaurant Hospitality Association to come up. We could suspend the rules real quick for a brief presentation.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
As you know, as part of us opening up our city, the restaurant hospitality industry was hit, and so having the job fair starting at 10 o'clock this morning over at the Batwell Auditorium, I want to thank all of our mayor's office and everyone working together. But good morning, Ms. Mindy, how are you?
Good morning. Thank you so much for helping us with the career fair that we're having at Batwell Auditorium today. We have about two dozen employers that are going to be over there, and we have hundreds of jobs to fill. We have jobs from all levels, from entry level to manager, all different types of jobs, sales, administrative, housekeeping, security. There's virtually any kind of job that anybody might be interested in, cooks, servers. We hire everybody and anybody, and we also offer second chances to nonviolent offenders. So we just invite everybody in the city to come out and join us at the job fair, and I just want to compliment the city of Birmingham and all the employees that we've worked with throughout this. The people over at Batwell have been so professional and so helpful. The city's PR staff, Kim and Cody have just done excellent jobs, and everybody that I've worked with. Jeff was really helpful in getting us, you know, parking passes and working with all the departments across the city. It's just been a wonderful experience, and we really appreciate it.
I just want to say that it has been a long time in the making to get this job fair done. We're thrilled to be doing it. I think, you know, we put a pause button on with the pandemic, but we are back open. And in talking to several of the employees, we're all, like Mindy said, we're hiring many positions. Wages are starting at the $12 and go as high as $20 to $25 an hour. So entry level is completely changed from a pay perspective, and we're excited about that. I personally am responsible for four hotels, and I can tell you I've got 25 positions that I can fill right now. So we're hoping to have a successful job fair. Again, the city's been instrumental in their assistance, and we truly appreciate your help.
And we will hire people on the spot today. We have employers that'll hire people on the spot. Some people have asked that question, and so Birmingham's open for business. We're looking forward to getting ready for the World Games, and this is going to be a big step forward in that. And I would be fired if I didn't, didn't, didn't ask for some money while I'm here. I have sent letters to all of you back in June, and I just have those letters to pass out again today.
I apologize for leaving you here.
I'm just going to leave the letters here. We have a plan to help people that are returning to work. It's not actually money for the restaurants and hotels, but it's money for the employees that are returning to work. We would like to be able to offer them money through the American Rescue Plan for childcare and transportation. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time, and we appreciate everything y'all have done to help us. Thank you, President Parker.
Okay, real quick, Dr. Quinn, I think he had a...
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Do you have a approximate number of hotel rooms in the area that are currently offline because we don't have employees to staff those rooms?
I know right off the top, the Sheraton has 800 rooms, but they're, they're closed. So, and I'm sure that that plays out across the city, because I know Chris also used, he was the manager at the Eleton, and he could speak to that.
Yeah, so a lot of hoteliers are keeping that number close to the vest, so I would hate to make an assumption. I can tell you, speaking to several hoteliers, that we're doing hybrid plans, so maybe on Monday, Tuesday, you have two floors closed, and so you're only selling a third of your hotel, and then opening up for the weekends when there's demand. But a lot of it has to do with also allowing our employees time off, which is, you know, an interesting way to do business, is to tell people who do want to come visit, we don't have space for you. So, you know, obviously, the big one in the, in the city is the Sheraton still being closed, which is a huge preventative driver for filling up the convention center. So, and then that creates compression for a lot of hotels. You'll notice that there's several hotels that should be under development that aren't right now, and it gets back to the ability to have construction workers, plus the concern that, you know, there's no cooks available. I have a hotel currently that I'm not serving dinner at at night because I have no kitchen staff to do dinner for, and we're paying $22 an hour for a line cook at a Hilton Garden Inn. So it's not Highlands-level food. It's straight up, help me make a hamburger, fry some chicken wings, that kind of stuff. So that's the best I can give you right now, Mr. Quinn.
Bottom line is, we're, we're losing a tremendous amount of revenue.
We're losing a tremendous amount of revenue, all, all the way around.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, we're just going to go that way. Counselor Abbott, good morning.
Good morning. It's good to see y'all. What kind of safety protocol do you have for this career fair today?
The Batwell Auditorium, it has masks and hand sanitizer, and all the tables are socially distanced, and so we're taking precautions in all those types of ways.
And that's why they had it at the Batwell, to allow for a lot of space.
Well, I think if people, if people are listening to us, they would want to know that before they show up and everybody's all...
Yes, we have hand sanitizer, we have masks, we have, we can accommodate people in any way that makes them comfortable.
Good, thank you.
Anyone? Counselor Hoyt, or Counselor Smithman?
I was going to say, then, they got those many rooms, and I think we should dedicate, spend a night at one of these hotels. Come here. Come here.
You go right ahead. Tell us about it.
We welcome you to come have a staycation in Birmingham.
With your wife now, you know.
Mr. Hoyt, how good are you making a bed?
Okay. Listen, I'm going to do it, watch and see.
All right, is there anything else? Anyone else? We're, okay. All righty. Thank you all.
Thank you, we appreciate everything y'all have done.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Now, we're going to, Mr. Clark, as we go back to consent.
Consent agenda starts on page two. We have items one, two, three, four, and five on consent. Page three, items six, seven, and eight are on consent. Page four, items 12 and 13 are on consent. Please note that items 12 and 13 were recommended by Public Safety Committee, and item 13 was also recommended by Budget and Finance. Page five, we have items 14, 15, 16, and 17 on consent. Items 14, 15, and 16 were recommended by Public Safety Committee, and items 14 and 15 were recommended by Budget and Finance. Page six, we have items 18, 19, and 20 on consent. Item number 18 was recommended by the Public Safety Committee. Page seven, we have items 21, 22, and 23 on consent. Page eight, items 24, 26, 27, and 28 are on consent. Page nine, we have items 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34 on consent. Page 10, items 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40 are on consent. Page 11, items 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, and 46 are on consent. Page 12, we have items 47, 48, 49, and 50 on consent. Page 13, items 51, 52, 53, and 54 on consent. Page 14, items 55, 56, 57, and 58 are on consent. On page 15, we have item number 60 on consent, and on page, well, actually, on addendum items, we have item number 62 on consent. We have two addendums.
Do we have copies of them?
It should have been...
I believe those were emailed, but can you be sure that those went out to everyone? While we're being sure that everyone has the consideration of those addendum items, do we have any items that wish to be pulled?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to remove item 44, and it's prop time, carry it over for two weeks.
You said 44?
Yes. Item 44.
Any other items, Mr. Wood, dear lady?
Yes.
No, sorry, Mr. Hoyt? Yes, sir.
Yes, well, and, and if you could take this, I guess, this addendum off.
Yes, item 62.
Is it 62, is it?
62.
Yeah, it doesn't have a number on it, but I want to take that off because I think there needs to be some discussion on these line items. And the other is these liquor licenses, I guess that's one through eight.
That's items one through eight on pages two and three.
Yes.
Any other items?
President, I mean, I think that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Any other councils have any items?
But I tell you...
All right. If we have a motion for the consent agenda, then I'll read those, read this statement.
Second.
All items designated as consent are routine and noncontroversial and will be approved by one action. No separate discussion of these items would be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation indicated with a P will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
I'm thinking about it. I have to add those addendums.
Oh, yes, Mr. Clark, I'm good.
All right. That vote should be up.
Okay, all right.
Motion passed, so those items are approved. The first item is item number eight.
One? Item number one.
That's my, did I say eight? Item number one.
Item one, a resolution relative to the application of Saturn Music LLC for the transfer of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to be used at Saturn 241st Street South, Birmingham, in Hearing of All Support.
Second.
Yeah, Mrs.? This is a routine change of ownership for an existing venue.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, I was just trying to say, because I thought this organization was already in existence, and, and so what is it?
So every time, every time that the ownership changes on the ABC license, we have to vote on it, even, even though it's a place that's already exists.
For all these ownership changes?
No, just item one.
Just item one, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, item two is also the same item.
Okay, all right.
One and two.
One and two, okay. Well, I'm fine. You can put them back.
You want to, listen, y'all just want to vote on them individually, or is that what you want, Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, Mr. Clark, we're just, we're ready to vote on item one. Okay. Okay, all right, item one passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Item two, I get to pop up, a resolution relative to the application of Saturn Music LLC for a Division 1 dance permit to be used at Saturn 241st Street South, Birmingham, Hearing of All Support.
Move the item.
Second.
Same, same item. Just one's a liquor license and one's a dance permit.
Counselor Hoyt, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Mr. Clark, we're ready. Vote. Okay, all right. That item passes. Next item, please, sir.
Item three, a resolution relative to the application, Nairobi Capital Corporation for a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to be used at Eaton Lounge, 312, 20th Street South, Birmingham, Hearing of All Support.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, Counselor Williams?
Is that neighborhood report on, on this item?
Mm-hmm, it's in our packet. It's, they attended the Five Points South Neighborhood Association on the 29th of May. Five were in attendance, and all five supported.
Very good, thanks.
Okay, ready to vote.
Vote should be up.
Okay, all right. That item passes. Next item.
Item four, a resolution relative to the application of Juniper LLC for a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to be used at Juniper 3811, Claremont Avenue, Birmingham, in Hearing of All Support.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, Counselor Williams?
Yep, same, same deal, just a different restaurant requesting a lounge retail Class 1 liquor license. The neighborhood report is in the packet and published online for anyone that is interested in reading it, but they did attend the Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association meeting on 7/6. Twenty-five were in attendance, and all 25 supported.
Counselor Hoyt, you good?
Yeah, well, and, and let me just say, you know, there are a lot of things in, in the book, but, you know, for this, it is public consumption, so we have a process by which we go by, and everybody's not privy to that, and so that's why it's important to read those, because it, you know, these places do affect these communities around them.
Yes, sir. Okay. I understand. All right, Mr. Clark, we are ready to vote on item four. Okay, somebody had to vote. Okay, all righty. That item's approved. Next item, Mr. Clark, please.
Item five, a resolution relative to the application of Boss Lady Enterprise Incorporated for a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to be used at the Vine, 3801 Richard Aragon Jr. Boulevard North, Birmingham, Hearing of All Support.
Motion.
Second.
Counselor Williams?
Yeah, I'm assuming we want to reread the neighborhood form on this one. They attended the East Birmingham Neighborhood Association meeting on December the 20th. Five were in attendance, and five supported.
Mr. Clark? All right. Okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark, please.
Item six, a resolution relative to the application of Ferris on 41st Street LLC for a restaurant and retail liquor license to be used at Ferris on 41st Street, 430, 41st Street South, Unit A, Birmingham, Hearing of All Support.
Move the item.
Second.
Counselor Williams?
Same meeting on this one, Ferris on 41st, attended the Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association meeting on 7/6. Twenty-five were in attendance, and 25 supported.
Okay, all righty. Ready to vote. Okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark, please.
Item seven, a resolution relative to the application of EMB Parkside Sub LLC for a restaurant retail liquor license to be used at Tasty Town, 14th Street South, Birmingham, Hearing of All Support.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, Counselor Williams?
Which one is the...
Seven.
So, Tasty Town attended the Five Points South Neighborhood Association meeting on the 29th of May. Five were in attendance, and five supported.
Okay, all right. We're ready for vote. Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item.
Item eight, a resolution relative to the application of Sidewalk Film Center and Cinema Incorporated for a special events license, 140, to be used at Sidewalk Film Festival October 27 and 28, 2021, Third Avenue North, between 18th Street and 19th Street North, Birmingham, Hearing of All Support.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, Counselor Williams?
Mr. President, we're very excited that Sidewalk Film Festival is going to be back in Birmingham. It is a huge economic generator for the city of Birmingham. It puts us on the map in the independent film arena, which is something that is unique to a city our size. Most cities our size don't have this type of independent film, both brick-and-mortar place, which, which is what we have in the, the bottom of the pizzits, but also the festival. It, it is something that's very unique and enjoyed by, I think, pretty much the entire metro area.
Okay, all righty. So there's no neighborhood?
No, it's, it's throughout the Birmingham metro area, and they're, they're not required to go to neighborhood.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, and, and I was, I guess I was passing by Third Avenue, and I saw that they were showing Color Purple, and I don't know if all our young people have seen that, and they need to see that, that movie. And, and so I'm hoping that they revisit, I think they said the 23rd, and that was Friday, I think, but I'm hoping they revisit that because they really need to, need to see that. So kudos to the film community. I think it's important our young people be exposed. And when I was in New York, they were, they would put the movies on, on the walls, you know, as you, you know, shopping or whatever, and I thought that was really fantastic, that they were creative. You know, in some places, they put it on the, on the wall, and they had that little film festival. All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, Mr. Clark, I think that's all. We're ready.
All right. Vote should be up.
One more?
Hilliard is up.
Okay, all right. That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Should be item nine, an ordinance requiring lodging operations to obtain a permit, priority clearing operations to protect public health, safety, and welfare, require repairs for damaged city streets, curbs, or other city-owned property caused by the operation. We need to pass today, you see.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion on the item, please.
Move the item. Second.
All right, the item is before us now. Mr. Clark?
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to recognize you, Counselor Smithman, first, if that's okay, Counselor Abbott, and then we can hear from Attorney King, and we can then hear from Attorney Bernard. This is a matter with the Pine Al Vista and residents from the Airport Hills community. They came before COVID hit regarding a matter over in, in the communities. This is part of ongoing conversation with the Office of City Attorneys and others, and so that's the matter. I'm giving you the backstory and where we are now. Counselor Smithman, if you wanted to recognize you, then Counselor Abbott, then Attorney King, if, could have Attorney Bernard come up and make, or do you want to hear from Attorney Bernard first?
I don't mind hearing from Attorney Bernard, but I do want it to go to PIC or Committee of the Whole. I just think we just need to be informed about, especially a law that we're about to pass, because I know, as an attorney, if I'm doing like a pro-amia hearing, if somebody gave me a settlement right down for a child, I wouldn't just pass it just because they told me they think this is right, and I kind of think this is the same thing with this ordinance. So I'm not opposed to it, I just think we just need more information.
Okay.
And I think it needs to be more fair to us as the counselors to have information, you know, being explained beforehand, especially about legal matters, instead of it being presented in front of us and telling us to vote on it.
Okay, so do you want to hear from a...
Yeah, Attorney Bernard can sit.
What's the premise? I'm sorry.
We're going to ask Attorney Bernard to give us a, this is, this is, as you know, before, pre-COVID, there was an issue over in the Airport Hills, Pine Al Vista neighborhood regarding a matter dealing with a logging, a matter, the residents came before the council, that was before COVID, and this is a follow-up to that matter that, that we dealt with, with the, from the residents over in the Pine Al Vista and the Airport Hills community.
Let me hear.
Okay. Good morning, Attorney Bernard, how are you?
Good morning. Thank you, counselors, Council President Protem, and counselors. Julie Bernard with the Office of City Attorney. This is a matter that we have been talking to Council President Parker about that occurred in his district a couple of years ago, where there was a company that came in and bought some timber from some residents. It was in a residential area. They clear-cut the whole thing. It caused a lot of issues with noise and dust, erosion, and there was some cracking to city streets from the weight. You know, the streets were narrow. There were some other issues that happened where a truck on a Sunday took a turn and took out a power line, and it caused people's power to go off in the middle of the summer in the heat, or, well, it was the springtime, but it was pretty hot at the time. This ordinance addresses really just a piece of the whole tree pie for the city, if I can say it that way. This deals with us knowing if somebody is going to be doing that and having something to do about it if they don't let us know that they're coming in to do that kind of operation, put some responsibility on them for damage to city streets, and it's really dealing, this is dealing not so much with regulating the cutting of the trees or dealing with the trees, but with the, some of the nuisance activities that could relate to it, noise, dust, and the streets. We have, I know Planning Engineering and Permits has been working on some environmental ordinances related to the city. I'm still working with Counselor Abbott to finish some of her concerns about the tree ordinance, all of which will eventually fit together with it. This is, this is just a piece, as I said, to deal with the noise and dust and effects on city infrastructure, streets and other infrastructure in the right of way.
Okay, does that give us enough of the backstory? And so, hold on, I want to go, Counselor Smithman, so...
Oh, no, Counsel...
Okay, well, I know Counselor Abbott had next, and then Counselor Hoyt, that was, if, if...
If, now you jogged my memory as one of the dinosaurs. Didn't Counselor Commissioner now, Scales, had some issue with these folks, they were cutting? Is this sort of in that area, but this is a different area?
No, this is right off of Tarrant-Huffman Road, Pine Al Vista, right?
Yeah, I think, I think that they, she had brought this to our attention, some... Yeah, I think, I think that they, she had brought this to our attention some, some years ago. Is this something recently?
Yes, sir, it was right before COVID, it was right before COVID. As you know, we had probably about thirty residents that came down. It was, it was, it's probably about, about President Harris and her, from the Pine Off Vista neighborhood and that Airport Hills area. So it was right off of Terrence Huffman Road, but it was, it was, it was right before COVID. And they had, yeah, we had some lengthy conversations.
Okay, okay, no, you can't, you know, they do this in the country, they don't do this in the city too often.
Yes, yes, sir. So, Counselor Abbott, I'm sorry, go back.
Well, I just wanted to ask, I do believe that this should go to committee and I would like to see that, I noticed in there that there was a notice that would be sent only to people within five hundred feet. And I've always thought five hundred feet was too little for ZBA and everything else to only notify people within five hundred feet. So I'd just like to see it changed to at least a thousand feet, so that more people in the community know what's going on. If we only notify people within five hundred, we may be assuming that they'll tell all their neighbors, but they may not even know who their neighbors are. And the other thing is about the buffer or the lack thereof, is there a possibility that we can include a requirement in property that abuts a residential neighborhood, that there be a buffer? Because to me, that was a horrifying thing to have happen in a residential neighborhood. And regardless of the ownership of the property, it was stripped and left for dead. And so it seems to me that we should require, you know, a hundred-foot buffer if it's in a residential neighborhood or abuts a neighborhood that's residential. So I just wanted to throw that in, and I do think that this should go to a committee. And I think that everything we do should go to committee, so that we don't end up with appointees to the ZBA who've never been asked if they want to be on the ZBA and things like that. So just send it all to committee and go through the proper processes and we'll be much better off. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, all right, Counselor Smithman.
Well, I'm gonna propose for a two-week delay so I can go through PIC.
Second.
Also, I want to make sure that when we pass this ordinance, because I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna pass it, that we actually enforce this. I know that's not your job, but we have so many, so many laws on the books that we're getting blamed for when it's not even our fault for what some of these code enforcement violations are happening. So I just want to make sure in this discussion and further discussion, especially for Counsel Park, I want to thank him for his work so far, that he doesn't get blamed for something that's not even his fault. And he's done his due diligence by passing this ordinance, by having this ordinance come before us.
So, all right, thank you, Counselor Smithman. So your meeting is next Tuesday?
Yes.
Two o'clock, okay, if the residents want to, okay. And then, but we'll do a two-week delay on this, and the meeting will be next Tuesday at two o'clock.
Counsel, would you give us an update after your meeting?
Yeah, you, well, hold on, Counsel Hoyt, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just asked her, she would you give a update after her meeting?
Okay, yes, sir, okay, I'm gonna go to Counsel.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President, real quick, this, this actually was on my granddad's street. And so this has been recent and it was a lot of issue with the trucks, you had these huge trucks coming down these residential streets. My question is, is, and I don't know if anybody on the city can answer this, but who approves, it looks like the, the city traffic engineer, if they don't get their hauling route approved, is that something that will prevent them from getting a permit?
The way that this ordinance is structured is if, you know, if they meet, you know, if they get approved, if the route gets approved, if they've done everything they're supposed to do, they should get the permit. If there's some reason that staff sees that a permit shouldn't be issued, the route's not correct or something and they won't agree to change it, and it gets denied, then there would be an appeal to the council for hearing. And that would be up to the council to review that at that point.
Okay, all right, well, I've got more questions, but we'll deal with it at PIC, thank you.
Madam Pro-Ten.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hoyt.
Yeah, so, and I guess from, from our perspective, how do we get the education of this out? Because this could happen, you know, most of us got some, some wooden areas or so near our districts at some point, you know, where it, where it abuts and what have you. So, because this could just be a pattern of folks just going in, in different communities. I know it happens more than not in rural areas, but, but we want to make sure that people know their rights and that, and that they, they can be our watchdogs, quite frankly. But there needs to be a collective effort to get a letter or something out to all the citizens, really. I just, I just believe that, you know, I'm looking at District Seven, I'm looking at District Nine, I'm looking at District One, and maybe, Dr. Quinn, you don't, you don't have any bushes around you, but.
Let's take a truck to Drew Hill.
Okay, but I'm just saying, these big areas, so where they got trees and vacant land and what have you. So we just need to make sure that we're doing all that we can to protect people's property and make sure we protect the city's property, because if they deface and the property, that's a problem for the city of Birmingham, quite frankly.
I'm definitely in agreement with you, Counselor Hoyt, because when the citizens came to us with this issue, I think some of them just woke up one morning and they were out there logging and cutting down and, you know, excavating and doing things with the trees in the, in their communities. So I'm in agreement and hopefully that we can add something to this, to put that meat into it, that teeth into it.
Uh, what we'll do is, I guess over the next two weeks, work to address that matter as far as the communication component to the, you know, as we move forward. And we'll use these next two weeks to, when it comes back up and going through committee, to start addressing that on Tuesdays, at Tuesday's committee meeting, Counselor Smithman. And then have that as part of the entire presentation when it comes back before us in two weeks of everybody's, everybody's agreement with that. Counselor Hoyt, you're, Counselor Hoyt, you're.
Yes, sir, I, I agree.
Mr. President, one other thing that I thought of. I noticed in the ordinance that there's a fifty thousand dollar bond for these logging companies. Well, considering how much it costs to repave a street, my thought was, is fifty thousand dollars enough? If they, if they just walk away, if they ruin the streets and they just walk away and say, the heck with you, and we get their bond money, is fifty thousand dollars enough to do the repairs? Because the waterworks is doing some work near my home, and I noticed those big dump trucks, just in the few days they've been there, the streets are beginning to collapse. And the pavement is being destroyed, and I'm like, this has only been like two weeks of trucks driving on those city streets that are not meant for that kind of traffic. So is fifty thousand dollars bond enough if we have some scofflaw kind of group that comes in and basically just walks away after they make a big mess?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm looking for it, for some reason I can't find it in my copy that I have here. But unless something was accidentally deleted in the transmission, that's fifty thousand per mile.
Oh, per mile, well, but fifty thousand won't, won't pave a mile.
That, that's the recommendation that has come from the city engineer and the, the traffic engineer. You know, maybe it will, maybe it won't, hopefully they won't destroy like ten miles, it may be be a portion and it would cover that. But, you know, there, there's a balancing that can be discussed, but it is currently, the recommendation was fifty thousand per mile.
Counsel Abbott, let me, let me piggyback on that.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's going to, to committee, but I just, I'm concerned that we're always letting the taxpayers be left holding the bag. You know, when we screw up, the taxpayers pay, and that's just a fact.
I understand, what I was gonna ask is if, Chief, if, if the Department of Transportation could be a part of that conversation and kind of lay out some, maybe there's some information or there might be some, some flexibility that we could add, but if they could just be a part of the committee meetings, conversation, understanding that that's an issue that's been, been raised. If that's okay, Counsel Abbott, that way we can.
Yeah, I just saw a lot of things about it that I thought we needed to beef up for the citizens. I mean, for, I mean, the residents are the people we're supposed to care about.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to make sure that we're taking care of our residents and I'm not interested in taking care of the logging company.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, pardon, I just have. Quick thing for Chief Sparks, and that is, when this goes to PIC, I already know that my question is going to be in relation to the bonding work, what is the trigger that is going to be able to allow us to access that bond from city staff? Meaning, is it gonna be PEP, Department of Transportation? Who's going to inspect that and determine that there is an actual amount of damages? And what is the process for us accessing that bond? You know, we have a lot of work that's done in the city of Birmingham, very rarely do we access the bonding company. We've done it a couple of times since I've been here the past four years, but there's always an issue with us accessing the bonding company. It's basically short of a, of a large lawsuit, or usually it's within, within a lawsuit that we actually get access to the, the performance bond. So I want to make sure that it is something that with routine city staff and without Madam City Attorney having to file a suit, that we can have access to any kind of damages. Even if, even if they agree to a resurfacing plan in lieu of a bond, I would be okay with that, too. But anyway, that's gonna be my request on next Tuesday, right? Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion for a two-week delay with PIC meeting next Tuesday at two PM?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, that's a two-week delay on that item.
Item ten, an ordinance to amend Section One, subsection C of ordinance number twenty-one thirty-two, as amended by ordinance number twenty-one seventy-two, to extend the program authorized to traffic engineer. Our deck's need to issue shared space permits to allow businesses to temporarily expand onto the sidewalk and into parking spaces to enhance social distancing during the coronavirus pandemic in accordance with the Alabama Alcohol Beverage Control Board's extended acceptance of temporary spaces through November the third, two thousand and twenty-one. Need UC to pass today.
Motion.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay.
Counselor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. President, this item came before public safety.
You did get a no vote on the UC, so we'll hold it over to the next week.
Okay.
Oh, we didn't get.
Counselor Hoyt. Go ahead, Counsel.
Because I, I have some comments about, about this, what I'm.
Yeah, but, so do you want to bring it up and then we can do the comments? Or do you want us, if you say no, then we have to move on and it's next week? What about a point, what about point of information first, before we? Okay, why don't you do that right quick, so.
Can I get clarification on the UC, are you voting UC, Counselor?
He's asking about, he's asking about.
You need to vote, get it, the UC and then get it forward to discussion.
Okay, so we can't discuss it until we get.
No, 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 what I was saying, yeah, so what you mean, so.
My Lord, Kevin must have presented it. So, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote with it.
Okay, to bring it up, you now consent now.
Okay.
The item is before us and we're gonna call on Counsel Hoyt.
You declared a vote on the UC.
Okay, the item, okay, all right.
I'm for it.
Counsel Hoyt's going yes.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, the item is before you.
Okay, Counselor Hoyt.
Yeah, well, and my concern is, is a safety issue with respect to this. And I observed a business just this week, as I was going down First Avenue, I think it's right for the, the wine loft or somewhere, some business on the right, they done took over the whole sidewalk. So anybody coming down the sidewalk would have to go in the street to get passed. And I don't think that we need to be putting our citizens in harm's way, because that's a lawsuit waiting to happen, I'm here to tell you. And if we don't address it, you can't take the whole sidewalk. Now, I think you can take a portion of the sidewalk but still leave, leave passage. And I don't know the name of the place, but you all probably know it's on the right-hand side, right after, I think it's White, you know, the, the accounting guy, right there by his building, you know what I'm talking about?
Porter White.
Porter White, mhm, it's right there by his building, it's a, a little restaurant, I guess, a club, whatever. And, and they, they done took the whole sidewalk. So in order to pass by, you gotta go out in the street.
So if you can get the name of the place, because I'm not really sure what you're talking about, but just, just to go over the, to respond to that, Mr. Hoyt, the ordinance states that, and Ms. Bernard, I might need your help with the, I don't want to misstate it, but the ordinance states that, that they do get inspected prior to they're issued the permit. And part of the inspection is to make sure that they're not violating ADA compliance on that sidewalk. So is, Ms. Bernard, is, did I? Kelvin doesn't know the law.
I apologize. The, the ordinance, I think specifically states that they cannot occupy the entire sidewalk, so we can.
Do an investigation as we speak, because I'm telling you, nobody in a wheelchair could get by, they had to get out in the road and the street to get by. And it's between twenty, I guess it'd be Twenty-First and Twenty-Second Street, on your right-hand side, if you were going east on, on First Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, so it's right there, I don't know the name of the place. But, but, but it needs to be addressed because I, I, you know, I was just concerned by citizens. You know, and then if they sitting there and they got a little tip and they step off, they in the road. Yeah, so what I'm saying is, we got to have a policing, because some of these folks just took it to another level now. They didn't initially do that, because I passed by it before, you know, some, you know, maybe some years or so. And they hadn't taken the whole sidewalk, that agent took the whole sidewalk. So nobody could go, go north or west, I mean, east or west.
So do you have a request for them to, for enforcement?
Please, please, and if we can get a report back next week, maybe Kevin can go down and, and get them straight.
Nah, he.
He'll stay too long.
Overinvest, he overinvestigated. Anyway, the, the point of this ordinance is, you know, during the pandemic, one thing that we had is, we had, we allowed with the conjunction of the ABC Board, to allow our businesses to have dining on, in public spaces. There was some of that which was in sidewalks and some of that which was in some city right of way, as well as parking spaces. And it depended on, obviously, the layout of what was public property in front of the restaurant. There's, you know, they, we, we were intentional about not wanting restaurants to be, having people sat, you know, directly adjacent to a, a lane of traffic and things like that. So depending on what the public space looked like in front of that venue or restaurant is, is how that was configured, along with keeping it ADA accessible. All in all, I think that this has been tremendously successful. I know that both our restaurants, as well as our citizens and those that visit the city of Birmingham, really like this. There's, it changes the atmosphere of the restaurants completely when you have that ability to dine outdoors. restaurants completely, when you have that ability to dine outdoors, and, and I think it's been very successful. To my knowledge, we, we haven't had any incidents of injury or anything like that from this. Is that correct, Ms. Bernard? None, none, no known incidents. Nothing's been reported to us by B P D. So I think that this has been tremendously successful, and it's a way that we can support our local economy, which in, in large part is driven by the hospitality and restaurant industries. This is something that, you know, you might be comfortable eating outside, but you might not be comfortable eating inside, and it gives our citizens and our guests to the city the ability to do that, and it gives our restaurants the ability to serve them. So I think that this is a huge, a huge win. I want to thank the, Ms. Bernard, and, and even Kelvin, for working with the A B C board on this. I know that the governor's orders are over, and I know that having, that we appreciate both Governor Ivy and the A B C board in allowing this to continue, because it is something that is, is well-received by both the, our restaurants and our citizens that they serve. Mr. Hoyt?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, you know, citizens do pay attention to what we say here, and so it's the Atomic Lounge.
Okay.
So you got a, you got a location, Atomic Lounge, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
What's going on there?
They, they done took over the whole sidewalk, and people got to walk in the street to get past, because we're not monitoring it.
All right, Ms. Abbott.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was curious to know who's in charge of, of monitoring this and enforcement, because we, I think we have some restaurants who've just thought that it was just like a right, and they could just go ahead and spread out. Is anybody in charge of enforcement? Do we have any enforcement people, or does someone have to complain in order for the city to do something?
It would help if they complained, if they're complaining, so we would at least have visibility, but our enforcement is done through our planning, engineering, and permits department. So I've made a note and made sure that staff will follow up and give a report out, per your request, Counselor.
Okay, so this is only effective through November the 3rd of 2021, and then after that, what do we do?
I'm hopeful that we will be able to get a permanent solution with the state of Alabama. The, the issue is not a willingness on the, the city of Birmingham's perspective.
A B C.
I think that A B C board, and, and we're very grateful for them working with us on this.
Yeah, and, and we just want it to be done well and in good order, and it is true that some of them take up a large portion. And what they do is, they leave the area with the parking meters in it available for people who are on foot, but the problem is, if you're in a wheelchair, or any device, you know, weaving between the meters is not really very easy. So we, I don't know whether we've allowed it, or whether people have just moved, slowly moved out, and taken up more and more of the sidewalk, but we just need to somehow be on top of it instead of the usual. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you the governor, yeah. Well, and, and I, I don't want people to think I'm a dream killer, but First Avenue is not a street that is blocked off. So that means there's traffic going down, up and down, even when they're out there, okay? And there's nothing that provides for safe passage, okay, other than getting into, into the street. And like, and like Counselor Abbott stated, and if they're lining the park right there at the door, then you know they're fully in the street if they want to get past, okay? So it's got, we got to come up with some mechanism of, of controlling how they expand. And I think it's a wonderful idea, because I saw it in D. C. in the years I've gone there, and it's, you know, it's quite popular to have, you know, people outside, you know, eating and drinking and what have you. So I'm not, not against that, I'm just, places where, you know, they have impede, the accessibility is an issue for me.
I understand that. I, you know, just, just for the record, I've gone on several fact-finding missions to Atomic, prior to this even coming up, because I guess it was an intuition that it, it perhaps would. And just so everyone knows, that there is a, a way to get by between the, the, their structure outside and the, the physical metered parking on the street. But anyway, Mr. President.
I have some pictures, I'm gonna go out to the seat, because I.
I might be in them, I might be waving at you.
Y'all might be doing your due diligence together, you might be doing it together. Why don't y'all go do your due diligence together?
I think it's disingenuous to suggest, and cavalier to suggest that, you know, they got somewhere to go, but, but if a wheelchair can't go through there, that's a problem. Whether you've been there or not, and you've done some fact-finding, I don't go there, but, you know, but I don't have probably anybody going there. But I'm here to tell you, I'll have you some pictures, and I'll send them to all the councils and the mayor's office.
Okay, all righty.
Mr. President.
Okay, that item, we're ready. Any other conversations, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clark, on this item.
They're not going to move the furniture, no. They're going to burn it, man. It was hotter than a level.
All right, come on, who else hadn't voted? Let's, come on, Counselor Hoyt.
Be sitting loads down there.
All right, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Item number 11 has been requested to be withdrawn.
Okay, all right.
Next would be item 25, a resolution confirming the appointment of one member to the Arlington House to Bellum Home and Gardens. Board of Director said term expire April the 30th, 2022.
Move the item, no, move the item.
Second.
All righty. The Arlington House has Eric Wright replacing Miss Elias. Term expire on April 30th, 2022. So with that, close it, and ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
So who are we appointing?
Eric Wright.
Does Eric Wright know he's being appointed? Did, did this go through committee?
Counselor, Counselor Abbott, you're making a, I know what you're referring to, and we'll discuss that later. This was submitted by the Arlington House, their self-appointed board, this is who they submitted. His resume is attached to, in, in the back, and he has a Bachelor of Arts degree, attended Alabama State University. So all that information is, is, was submitted by the, by the Arlington House. Attorney Bernard, if you want to.
Well, I would like to recognize the service of Mrs. Elias. She has been, she has been, at every event I have ever attended at Arlington, she is just one of, has been one of the most dedicated, she and her husband both, dedicated directors of that facility, and truly interested in its survival and its beauty. And I just want to give a shout-out to her, because she's served a long time, but she's done a great job.
Oh, I, I agree with you, Counselor Abbott. She has been, I mean, it was every step of the way, very, you know, engaged in the process, and truly loves, you know, what she does, and, and being a part of Arlington, of the Arlington family. So I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and, and, you know, her own family's been supportive of, of her efforts. A lot of times you would see her husband making sure, you know, along with her, so her true dedication has truly been there, so, and to the entire family. So I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Mr. President, if I could just also add accolades to Mrs. Elias and her tenure and her support of the Arlington House and that area in itself, that community. She's just a very, very focused and dedicated person to the preservation of that community and people being able to enjoy it. So I want to thank Mrs. Elias and her husband for the work they've done.
Okay, all right. Mr. Clark, we're ready. Okay, that item passes. Next item.
A resolution setting a public hearing August the 24th, 2021, to consider the adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2021-9, to change zone district boundaries from MUH, mixed-use high district, to QI1 Light Manufacturing District, in order to construct a new advanced auto parts retail and warehouse facility, filed by Ashley Klein, representing owner, Elsie Gurley, for the properties located at 9125 and 9127 Parkway East, and situated in northwest quarter of section 1, township 17, South Range, southwest Birmingham. Hold on a second, let me see. Who made the motion, I'm sorry?
That's me.
Okay, thank you. I'm just ready for a vote, then, I guess.
We're ready for the vote.
Yes.
That vote should be up.
Item passes, and we've set that hearing date.
Uh, we can go back to 44.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Item 44, a resolution determining that the building or structure located at 4121 Eleventh Avenue bylaw, Birmingham, to be on safety public nuisance and directing that it be demolished. Motion, please.
Yes.
Remove approval.
Second.
All right, item is before you.
At this time, is there any discussion about the item, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, yes, I would like to carry that over for two weeks, please.
Second.
Counselor Members, here you, here you, and Hoyt. Councilmember here you, that vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Next item.
Thank you.
All right, we should be.
For with the delay. Thank you.
All right, item 61, in order to amend title 2, General Government, Chapter 5 Boards, Commissions and Committees, Article N, Arlington and Bellum Home and Gardens Board, Section 2-5-213, Membership Appointment, Term of Office, and Section 2-5-214, Bylaws, Meetings, Quorum, uh, Quorum of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, to further provide for the membership and meetings of the board. This is the first read, so need you see to pass it today?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
No.
We'll hold this item over to next week.
Thank you. So we'll hold that item over. The next item, Mr. Clark.
Just one second. That was Counselor Abbott. Um, 61, we just did 62, we took it off. Item 62, in order to further amend the COVID state and local fiscal recovery fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, by transferring $53,100,000 from undesigned and appropriating $3 million to community-based public safety initiatives, $1,500,000 to COVID-19 responses, $18 million to neighborhood revitalization projects, $18,750,000 to public transportation, $4,500,000 to small business support, $1,100,000 to employee vacation buyout, $4,750,000 to tourism, and $1,500,000 to grant providing professional services support. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
All right. Items here, for us, we have, should I actually make comments first on the presentation of it, or we can kind of delve into it? I can, Mr. Mayor, oh.
I'd like to hear a presentation.
You want to hear a presentation?
I'd like to hear a presentation.
Like a committee of the whole presentation.
Okay, all right. Yes, if, if Mr. Datcher, Mr. Mayor, or, just give us a moment.
He had to tell me loud.
No, he is not. He's right outside in the hallway now. He was.
He don't walk that far.
And Russ said, I, I, at, before we adjourn, yes, I was just, you know, you called.
I told you we're at church.
Waiting on your sermon, and waiting on you to pass the plate there, good pastor. Good morning, Counsel, good morning, Counselor Hoyt. Got to give him his own salutation this morning. As you all know, the council, the city of Birmingham receives just north of $140 million from the federal government from the American Rescue Plan, tranche 1, we received May 11th, just over $70 million. Approximately 17 and 1/2 million of that was used for premium pay for city employees, and we appreciate your support of that and honoring the service and sacrifice of the folks, the men and women who are on our front lines every day, are representing and serving the citizens of the city. Secondly, we now have the second remaining amount of about $53 million, and working with council leadership and the mayor, we've identified some shared priorities, and some kind of, to use the most technical word I know, buckets, to allocate dollars towards, so we can then begin the process of evaluating proposals submitted by the public, and the priorities and projects that the council, individual council members have for their individual districts. What's before you today does not approve any individual projects. All projects and proposals will still need to come back to the council for their, through the committee process, whether it be economic development, P I C, budget and finance. So each individual project, proposal would still need to come back. This allows us to begin that process by sitting these dollars into budget lines that we can then attach potential projects to. There is a professional services line that we talked to all of you about, that would allow us to do two things. One is to identify and secure project managers, two levels of project managers. One, that would do the pre-work, that would design, scope, and cost out projects, give us timelines, those kinds of things. And then a second set of project managers that would do the actual construction. So that kind of duality allows us to have kind of a check and balance on, on the creation of projects, right? So if the same person designs it, the same person who's building it, we don't have a check and balance there. So we're having someone design it, and then someone else build it. So there is a check and balance to ensure each vendor accomplishes what they're contracted and paid to do. The second set is for grant evaluation, writing, pursuit, and vetting of, of potential projects and proposals, in alignment with the interim final guidance that we received from the American Rescue Plan. So just last week, as we began talking to many of you on Wednesday, the E D A of the federal government released $3 billion of federal funds that were, that are competitive. And that is just the first release of hundreds of billions of dollars that are remaining in the American Rescue Plan, hundreds of billions of dollars that is, that are currently in the text of the proposed American Jobs Plan, i.e. the infrastructure plan of the federal government. And we don't have the standing capacity to go and pursue those dollars. We need folks who are ready to work day one, so that when a grant announcement is made by the federal government, we don't have to then identify someone, contract someone, go through the process. We've been lost three to four weeks of lead time, and we cannot be competitive that way. We need to have the capacity to be able to pursue these resources, because nobody's sitting around and waiting on Birmingham to, to, to be in a competitive stance. And so we, we're, that is, you know, that professional services line item, so I just want to make sure you guys understood that one specifically. That would allow us to have grant writing expertise at our disposal when these grant opportunities come on board. The other part of that professional services with grant writing is evaluation and the reporting, because as of July 31st, we are due to the Department of Treasury, our first report on how we spent any dollars from the American Rescue Plan, and we can't just tell them we spent 17 and 1/2 billion dollars on premium pay. We have to talk about who got it, how it was distributed, and then the actual justification attached to the text of the, in the statute and in the interim final guidance. So there's great specificity, and we need that kind of capacity to ensure that Birmingham's compliance record remains perfect with the federal government throughout this process. So with that, I have, answer any questions you may have, or, Mr. Mayor, I defer to you at your guidance.
All right, you're gonna start, I'll put you in.
Start with Woods, he's like he got something on his mind.
Start with Woods. He's like, he's got something on his mind.
He's got a lot on his mind.
Councilwoman Wood, you're going to take a round. You're okay right now, I'll come back to you. Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Williams, who'll start, it's your first. Councilwoman Williams, ask somebody to you as well.
Sure, um. So I was surprised to see some of this because it's not exactly what, we're, Mr. Datcher, it's not exactly what we talked about. Can we talk about why $18.75 million is going to public transportation?
Yes, sir, there's some anticipated needs around some specific projects. Again, those items, we're just putting those in buckets, and the council can at its wisdom and its, um, at its desire, move those dollars to be a budget ordinance. It's similar to what we do every year with the, with the city's budget. But there are some anticipated needs with some specific projects. The council will be getting more detailed information about those projects. Again, this doesn't move any money out the door. This just begins the process of allowing us to attach projects to create the, um, request to move to council committees. Um, and I just want to make sure that, I'm, I'm going to say that three or four times today, this does not move money out the door. It only assigns it to these priority areas, um, that the mayor, the council, and quite frankly, the citizens of the city have expressed, uh, via the 200 proposals that we received for over $2 billion, um, that we received through the portal over the last several weeks.
So when, I don't, we, we met this past week, right?
Council, I talk to you daily, but yes, we did, we met last night.
I thought we did. It, only a matter of days ago, and there wasn't a, and there's about $20 million that wasn't discussed when we met that has been added to this public transportation and employee vacation buyout.
Yes, sir.
So I guess my question is what, I mean, we didn't talk about that, so I don't know what it's going to.
So, uh, Council, before those items move out the door, before they even come to you guys, you will get the kind of detailed, um, the detailed, the details that you need of those proposals. Again, this just sets them in line items, it does not move those dollars. You still will have the scrutiny and the opportunity to pursue any and all questions that you have about those lines.
Let me re-ask my question. Why didn't we discuss it a couple of days ago when we talked about the rest of the $53,100,000?
Really good question.
Councilwoman Williams, I think the reason you all didn't speak about this is because all the other things that were submitted, there was no conversation about. There was no conversation about what's been submitted or what's been talked about from individuals, nonprofits, small businesses, and department heads that have submitted issues and concerns. So what, what's been presented to you all today is just buckets, right? Um, I think transportation was definitely a bucket based on things submitted, based on requests, et cetera. So that's the only explanation that can be given.
Can Kelvin come back up? Because Kelvin's.
No, I'm not going.
Mr. Hoyt, looks like I might be joining you at the atomic this afternoon after talking to Mr. Williams.
And just so explicitly clear.
Yes, sir.
Director Datcher.
Yes, sir.
I am disappointed that we had an hour and a half meeting, and there was an omission of one-third of what's on this sheet today that we talked about. That, not, I'm not.
No, that's, uh, no, council is absolutely fair. And so those things have kind of been moving.
Because I feel like I've been bamboozled a little bit.
I, I don't think you've been bamboozled, Council. I think those things are before you, and again, at the purview of the council, if those things move or they don't move. Again, those, these setup, these bucket items that will give us the opportunity to bring more details to you, and I'm, I'm open and ready to stand any scrutiny from the Honorable Representative for District Two at, at its convenience.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, I just saw this yesterday, so I'm going to make a motion that we refer this to the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, we're going to let. Can you hold that until?
Okay, I, I will hold till time appropriate.
Okay.
I'll second it as soon as he's ready to quick hold it.
But if we allow others the opportunity to speak.
I think we should.
Okay, do you, you have anything right now? I mean, we can go on, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Council Abbott, do you want to?
I haven't heard the word bamboozled in a long time. I was thinking hoodwinked, but you know, bamboozled is a really much more fun sounding word. You probably say it when you're at the atomic. Anyway, um, I would like to see the breakdown for each one of these categories, because someone based their recommendations on something. So we need to see the something that these recommendations were based upon. Now, individual council members, $2 million, I know all of us have enough projects to spend $20 million, so I'm not worried about those, but I would like to see the breakdown for community-based public safety initiatives and COVID-19 responses and public transportation and small business support and employ, well, employee vacation buyout. I assume that's all employees that couldn't take their vacation?
And Ms. Abbott, Councilwoman Abbott, I'm going to be very direct with you, with the exception of the employees, because that came directly from HR, that was one of the things submitted. None of these other buckets have any detail, because they're just buckets. There was a, um, several things happened. I know there were some individual conversations had with councilors, and then there was some extensive conversation, um, with council leadership and, and council, um, administration. In that conversation, we talked about buckets, and then we talked about an up to number related to millions placed in each bucket, and that's it. There is no detail to provide to you, because we have to actually vet what was submitted in totality, and then we actually have to, actually have to assess in detail all the things you all have recommended. So this, what you all are voting on is not trees, it's, it's, it's literally forests. It's big picture, it's just buckets, it's buckets only, and there is no detail to provide to you.
Okay, well, let's take half of the money from public transportation and put it into small business support. Can we do that today?
If you get for the people that want to do that with you, absolutely.
Okay, so what is these 18 million? How did we arrive at these figures? I guess that's what I want. I want to know how these figures were arrived at. Clearly, there is someone who looked at these issues and said, well, we're going to need about this much for this and about this much for this. That's what I want. I want to know what these figures were based upon and what we can do with the money in these categories. And I know that these figures were not just pulled out of the sky.
Well, 18 million was pulled out of the sky for district, for district priorities. It's, I mean, you can't have it for one and not have it for the other. 18 million was pulled out of the sky for district projects that we don't have a number for each project. Is that fair?
No, it's not fair.
But that was, that was what's, was submitted.
It's, you know, I don't know what y'all talked about in your meetings, but in mine, we talked about the projects in District Three for which there is insufficient funding for whatever reason. But what I'm saying is, let's just take public transportation as an example. 18,750,000 is being allocated for public transportation. What is that figure based upon?
Ca- ca- Council Abbott, what I, I think just like.
I mean, does anybody else want to know this stuff? Because I, I just think we need to understand what.
I do if it gets down to me.
Yeah, well, okay, well, I'll be quiet then, because that's just what I want to know, okay?
Well, we can, we can, we can finish the questions, then we'll ask, we'll respond back to it. But just like, you know, just getting the sense of, of, two million per district, is that, you know, was that a fair number? I don't know. I mean, but that's what I'm saying, that's what was, I mean, that I thought, just talking to everybody, to jumpstart projects in individual districts as relates to the council. So I didn't have, I mean, as far as justification, I know we've got projects, I know we can look at the capital project, just kind of get an idea. So, you know, just like we were asking about the, you know, the, the mayor's asking us, okay, how do we arrive at our number? It was just simply trying to have equity as relates to everyone having, you know, $2 million per district to address some of the concerns in, in everyone's district.
Yeah, and I'm good with that. All I want to know is how these figures were arrived at.
Okay.
Why do we need $4,750,000 for tourism? What are we going to do? What are we thinking we might want to do with that?
Okay, all right.
How did we arrive at the number? That's all I want to know.
Okay, all right, well, we'll get to that. Council Smithson, and then Council Hoyt, because.
I'll yield to Council Hoyt.
Okay.
Yeah, well, thank you, um, and, and I, and I guess, um, I guess I'm, I'm a little disappointed that we don't have more questions than we have answers, uh, because, um, I don't think this is good planning. You know, being a former student of planning, and, um, you just don't decide you're going to spend this kind of money, and, and you say you're just going, it's just bucket. Because we know that once we pass it, you know, it's, it's not dictated on the pa, on the, on the council. It's dictated on the mayor recommending. Now, y'all haven't forgot the mayor-council act, have you? Are y'all oblivious to that? And the other thing is, um, the $2 million, I need to know that my entire district is going to benefit from this $2 million. And I want the council to decide on the projects. What I'm hearing is that you already got something in mind, and so how you going to have something in mind for my district? That you hadn't discussed with me? And, and let me, let me tell you, there's been no discussion in probably about six, seven months of any of this stuff that's come before us with District Eight Council. That's what you ought to know, and I'm, you know, I'm not running for nothing, so I ain't got to make nothing up. Okay? And, uh, and I can tell you from a street committee, uh, standpoint, uh, Council Abbott, that the public transportation that these private folks that they're getting ready to hire to provide transportation, that we don't really necessarily monitor the way we are to now with some of the folk. Because if I had 18 million, I would certainly give it to, uh, the BJCC. I mean, is it BJ, not BJCC, what's?
BJCTA.
BJCTA. Because we've cut them about $5 million. And so you're going to take 18 to give it to some, some private company that has no obligation to us? You know, public, public transportation, and I learned this from Councilor, um, Royal, is that, uh, public transportation is a, is a service. It's a service, it's a service to our people. And if we got any money, extra money, we ought to do that. Now, I know they got some money over there, but we got to make it better. Yeah, you got the World Games coming, and, and we divvying up 18 million, almost nineteen million to a private vote.
Let me, okay, let me, let me.
I can't interrupt nobody else when they.
Okay, that's fine. I was going to try to answer your question, okay?
Because see, if, if I had had this conversation before, I wouldn't have to talk about it from here.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Hoyt, and Council, if you will, I mean, we'll certainly answer everybody's questions, but I want to address that, um, Mr. Hoyt. The street committee has led you astray, if that is, that you've been receiving that. There's been no expiration, no conversation, no indication that any of that would happen in terms of acquiring private, uh, leadership or private capacity for public transportation. That is unequivocally not true.
Well, then, tell me where this 18 million is.
So as the mayor said, what we're looking at, Mr. Hoyt, is creating these buckets, right? Just large priority areas. Again, I do want to refer back to the 2 million per, per district, because as we talk to each counselor about some specific things, nobody's not, well, Council Hunter's exceeded, far exceeded $2 million, but most people, most people did not, right? And so those were just kind of our best guess on how we can begin to begin the process. Now, we did look at, um, kind of some of the proposals that have come in from individual citizens, from council members directly, from, uh, from city staff as well, but these are just broad-based buckets. Again, individual projects and recommendations will follow, uh, but more importantly, as you said with the mayor-council act, no money moves in any project proposal without this council's approval. They're vetting at both the committee level and, and this level.
Mr. Chairman.
What I, what I want to do is, I'm still got the floor.
It's, it's to his, it's to his point, Mr. Chairman of Public, of, of Trans, Transportation Committee. It's to the two things you care the most about, sir. Top two, BJ, BJCTA and BRT.
And so then I need to know specifically, then, what are those projects?
That's fair, but as we said, there are no, there's no detail, because it's just buckets, sir. You're voting on buckets only, no detail.
Well, then, what, what I would, what I would suggest, uh, for this council, is that we earmark these monies for these categories. Okay? And when you earmark them, you can't deviate from them. Because I, I, if it's going to go to B, uh, the BR, BRT and the BJCTA, um, then that's where it needs to go. Okay? Because what I don't want to do is make somebody rich, and we still struggling to get buses and, and folks to jobs and doctors appointment on time. That's what I don't want to do. We would be derelict, I believe, if we did that. And certainly, I think there needs to be some collective discussion as to what projects that councilors are proposing to do, because I'm telling you, um, you know, you get, telling me that we got a proposal from folk in the neighborhood, they hadn't talked to the, to the council. You know? And I'm saying, you know, if I'm the council, I'm still the council, I know I'm gone, but I'm still here. I got all the rights and privileges of everybody here, and so don't, don't treat me with discontent, contempt, rather. And so, um, I want to be able to say where I want this money to go.
You mean in the, the, the one in the district?
In, in the district, absolutely. Because, because I have a district to serve, not just one neighborhood. And if all the money is going to one neighborhood, then that's a problem for me. It's a problem for any council, coming in or going out. You know? And so, um, we, but that needs to be a collective, because I, you know, we got to have witnesses. You know, I don't want the sidebars. You know, y'all can do the sidebar, but I want my, my discussion to be in the open, so we're clear about where this $2 million needs to go. Okay? Because I still have some ideas about what I think need to be done. There's still a lot of stuff that we were promised that still hadn't been done. And we just got to, uh, make sure that it's done, and I'm depending on this council, this wonderful, magnificent council, uh, to, uh, to help me out, to help me out. Because I'm going to help y'all. How about that?
We're going to help each other.
Yeah.
At the atomic, I got it.
Yeah. So I, I, I would agree with Dr. O'Quinn, and, and, Miss, Miss President, and I'm asking respectfully, don't counsel the committee of the whole, and, you know, and, because I, I don't have time for games, I won't, we say we want, want to have a committee of the whole discussion about this, that's what we need to have. And I don't need some, something written in red, say it been counsel. That's been the pattern. I'm speaking truth to power, if I'm lying, then slap me.
We'll, we'll, we'll just go down to the atomic and, and talk for a second. All right, so.
Yeah, I'm not inclined to pass this today, because.
I, I got, I was trying to recognize Council Smithson and see if she had, I was going to circle back to her, then everybody would have had an opportunity to, um, to speak, so. Council Smithson?
Trying to think what I must say exactly, because I do know some of my colleagues aren't particularly happy with the allocation of the money, and we did talk about discussing this at committee of the whole, and some of the buckets that are on here, we just got information about last night. And this has nothing to do towards Mayor Woodfin. It's just sometimes I really think it's very unfair, and that's a nice word to say that, about us getting information at the last minute about big-ticket items, and then we're asked with less than 24 hours to vote on something, and if something goes wrong, then it's on us. So I'm not saying that Mr. Datcher didn't do a great job, because in our meeting, he was very, Da- Datcher was very diligent in helping us out with the $2 million for the neighborhood. He was very diligent. So it has nothing to do on them. It's just, I just don't want us to rush or feel rushed on items like this from here on out.
All right, we're about to have a chat. Okay. Let me go to Counsel Woods, and I'll ask President Protem to wrap it up. Is that... you want to go?
No, we'll let Counsel see.
Counsel Woods, go first, then President Protem, and then we'll...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to briefly say, I know we have been kind of talking about this. And I did want this process to move. Like I said, I have been pushing with a pretty sense of urgency to kind of get some things in place so we could have a little bit more in-depth conversations specifics, around specifics in the district, around projects. So I did, you know, ask that we move pretty quickly. Now, we did move pretty quick. I think that kind of putting it in buckets, I know specifically in the district, allows us to have a little bit more specific conversation around understanding how much capacity we're going to have and what we'll be able to fix and be able to work together to kind of allocate those funds further. And so I do appreciate kind of moving quickly. Now, I definitely have a large transportation budget. I know there are some needs. I'm thinking, we may be thinking the same things. But, yeah, I do appreciate you guys kind of moving quickly with this. But, yeah, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanted to say, sort of echoing everything that's been said by each of the councilors. I do want to start by thanking those neighborhood residents and leaders in District 7 who did submit projects. And so that is one of my sense of urgency in wanting to be sure that we have the $2 million or the amount that we will be able to dedicate within each of our own districts. And of course, those projects will come back for the council for full consideration. I do agree with Counsel Woods on, I would like to see us have our committee of the whole meeting as soon as possible so that we can all get to the matters in front of us and we can have the further understanding of what we need. I appreciate you all as councilors for asking for that depth of additional information. And I hear you when you say the fairness of it, wanting to have that information. And so I wholeheartedly support when the vote comes up that we do that. But I just want to say, I agree with the sense of urgency. So I ask you, Mr. President, we could be sure that we...
Yes, ma'am.
Quickly began to get everyone scheduled and we can get that before us.
So we can schedule, I don't know if y'all want to do it Thursday or Monday? Or we can do, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday? Which day, you want Thursday, Monday? Either one, Thursday or Monday? I'm just asking. We can, no, what I'm saying is we'll, I just want to put those dates out there. Check your calendars. We'll circle back, you know, later on today. But those are two days, or two dates that we can, we can look at. If everybody is okay with that, Thursday or this Monday, we'll work through that. All right, we're good with that?
Mr. President?
Okay, Counselor...
The goal is to have it before us this Thursday or Monday, depending on scheduling, and then have it before, back before us as a body a week from today.
Today, yeah.
Right? Because I do think that there is a, that there is a real need to hire... And I think that Mr. Dasher spoke to the project managers on both sides of the projects because a lot of these projects are going to take some, just because of the scope and the amount of projects that we have that we're about to fund. I think that there's a real need that we go ahead and get started on the project management piece to make sure that we can do some planning and implementation. We do not need to be sitting around with this money a year from now having the same conversation. We need to serve our citizens and get this money in capital projects throughout the city of Birmingham. So I am hopeful we can stick to that schedule.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll just check everybody's calendar later on today. And just with those, with those two days, we can both, we're good with those two days? Thursday, Monday? Okay, all right, okay, all right. Counselor?
Make a motion that we refer this item to the committee of the whole.
I'll second it. All right.
Yes. And just before we, before you carry it, Mr. President, because I think it's important, too, that we consider, I guess, a fiscal agent to coordinate it because, you know, we having trouble now with the rental assistance getting to the folk. And it's being, I think, done by the city. And I don't know, I don't want, you know, because I saw Commissioner Stevens, even with the county, was saying that they have not been able to get the money out into the hands of the people in a great amount. Because, and I guess bureaucracy, I don't know what the deal is, but we got to find a way. And that's why I think it's good to have these community partners because they are tucked in these neighborhoods and they can get that, those resources out to the folk. And they, they the one best, know who need them, really. If you go to the church and, or these churches, or these different agencies that are tucked in our communities, in our neighborhoods.
Okay, cool, yeah. So we'll pull those two days. We're going to, we will work through this like we have everything else. And we'll, we'll, okay. So we got a motion on the floor.
You need a second?
It's been a second.
Okay, okay, oh my. Hold on, President.
Okay, all right. And we will be working on, let me finish with the vote.
Oh, we got the vote, okay.
Okay. And we will be, have some further conversations, yes, or about which date and time?
Yes. Thursday, and I really cheated on this because sometimes y'all have meetings when I got stuff to do. But my wife is having a procedure. And so I know Thursday would not work for me. And I would hope that you all will consider that because I do want to participate in this process.
But it might be where, like I said, those are two days we will work through. If we've got even a project, we'll work through some days. I was just, those are two days I just wanted to pull out there, but we will work.
Do you consider that?
Yes, sir, I got it. I'm with you. But I was just, we'll work through that over the next, before the end of the day. We'll find, we'll find a happy median with everybody. You know, and find a date that everyone can be here. Is that, we're good with that? Everybody good with that? Okay, all right.
Counselor, President Parker?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, not on this item, but under the consent agenda, I just need to make corrections to item 55 so that when it does get certified that we have the right information. The company is not Kabuto, it's Kamatsu Parts. And it's Sourcewell, the contract number, Sourcewell 032119KOM. That's for number 55. Just if the council doesn't have any issues with, it's fine if it stays on consent, then everything's okay.
Okay, all right. Everybody good with that? All right, all right, we are now, any other items, Mr. Clark?
I think that's it for the agenda items.
Okay, all right. Make them need to suspend the rules and hear from one speaker. And after that, we'll do the old and new business. So the motions?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, let it be known, I'm saying no.
Parsette, all right. Last week, he was trying to get here, and he did ask, I think he called me Tuesday after noon asking...
Hey, good morning to the council.
Good morning, you have three minutes, Parsette.
First, want to thank God for still having us here during the mix of this pandemic, y'all, this crisis that we're in. Y'all had two subjects on the agenda the last previous weeks or so. I just wanted to touch on. Parker, let me first say, I thank God for your consistence with the coronavirus testing, as well as the vaccines.
You've done a great job.
Want to thank God for that, man. I think you've been consistent with your effort, you know what I mean? And I think I got my own decision where a lot of people don't want to jump on board or what have you. Second, we had an issue with Sister Smithman about the homeless people that kind of brought Brusseau's attention. You know what I mean? That's something very dear to Brusseau. And if I was going to put a tag on that, you up first, Sister Smithman. It would be instead of hurting the homeless, let's help the homeless. Brusseau, how have we helped the homeless? I got an answer for you this morning. If they hungry, we can feed them. If they thirsty, we can give them something to drink. If they need shelter, we can give them housing. I understand the business arena around the corner, pay tax revenue and all that kind of stuff. And homeless people act a little weird, got mental issues, and some of them got addictions or what have you. But we can be patient with that. Because the truth is, a lot of us ain't never paid check away from being on a line like them. You know what I mean? And so we have to be patient when it come to homeless people. And so we got to go back and tell our business folks that got the millions of dollars when you building your wealth, build around the homeless. Put them in mind also. Because the homeless ain't going nowhere. I'm in Matthew 26:9 in verse 11. The Lord said, "If Paul, you will have what you always." They ain't going to go nowhere, y'all. And so once we get these jobs and get our little titles, don't figure out a way to attack the homeless. We've been there, done that, over and over again throughout the years, y'all. And so I'm prayerful and I'm mindful. That we'll just be a little more patient with them people out there. Because somewhere I read, now, I ain't know somewhere I read, Hebrews 13:2, "Be careful and obtain no stranger," because it might have been an angel that you was unaware of. Some of them people out there in fourth hour country, y'all. In fourth hour country, and can't get no help, no count of way from the government. I'm sorry about that, y'all. I don't know who did that.
I still have a dream.
He still has a dream.
Hey, yeah, you know what I mean? So just be a little bit patient. Now, second, Brusseau, you up next? We heard about the virus, and we spoke to some experts a couple of weeks ago about the thing about the vaccines and why people ain't getting all that kind of stuff. Y'all, if I was going to put a subject on that, it would be that was a Savior long before there was a science. That was a Savior long before there ever was a science. Could it be, y'all, we overlooking what the Savior said to us about this time and this season that we're living in? Now, Paul told us in 2 Timothy, chapter 3, that we were going to move into some perilous times, troubled times. But we often overlook what he said. You know what I mean? Ain't nothing wrong with getting experts to come up here and speak and all that kind of stuff. But let me tell y'all why a lot of people ain't getting no vaccines. Because the experts have confused us in the last few years. Remember one time, they told us by the summertime, the virus should be gone? Remember another time, they told you, you sure you ain't going to have no vaccine? So now what they telling us today? Your five-year-old child going to need a vaccine. And so I think they're a little bit confusing, y'all, with the information they give us. You know what I mean? And some people got health issues and they just, they undecided about these vaccines. We probably had ours, I've had mine, I ain't no saying to tell you that. But I can understand some of the people viewpoints. And so we got to be patient, y'all, with this kind of stuff about a vaccine. Now, I got an expert, y'all. He didn't come from the CDC. I got an expert named Solomon. He told us over there, 2 Corinthians is going to be chapter 7, verse 14. The first thing he said, "If my people that are called by my name would armor themselves..." Now, three things he asked us to do. Number one, he told us to pray. Number two, he told us to seek his face. Number three, he said, "Turn from your wicked ways. Then you'll hear from heaven, and I will forgive your sin, and I will heal your land." Y'all, we don't turn, we going to keep on burning. No turning, it's going to be some burning. Because we just not seeing the beginning of sorrow. The writer said, "This just the beg..." I'm in Matthew 24, verse 8 or 11. He said, "It's just the beginning of sorrow times," y'all. And so we keep turning towards the experts. And experts don't know what they talking about most of the time. All we got to do is open up the book, what the Savior told us. And we get to the bottom of what's going on, y'all. We got a long ways to go. Now, I'm closing now. Y'all, let me tell you something, another thing about the vaccine. Y'all remember, we had somebody in leadership for four years that turned this crisis into a Democrat-Republican thing? And it's a chain of virus and all this mess. And you wonder why people don't want to be bothered? Because some of these folks are still brainwashed with that. Still being misled. And so it's confusing the public. And so I'm proud for y'all. I believe from the bottom of my heart, this is a serious thing. People are dying. People are getting sick from this virus. So we should take it very serious. Brusseau, in his absence, I got a closing word for him, and I'm getting on out here, y'all. I promise I am. I'm closing now. To the mayor's office, I watched a lot of sports games, Brusseau. And in the fourth quarter, sometime the pony came on back. Got beat the first quarter, got beat the second quarter, the third quarter. Ah, but the fourth quarter, that was a turnaround. And I just want to tell Brusseau, it looked like you kind of turned around in the fourth quarter. You started out a little rattly. The first and the second quarter and third quarter, I ain't going to say his intent for doing some of the good things that he doing, but it's getting done. It's getting, he's still in the race, and it's getting done. And so I just wanted to let him know, you in the fourth quarter, and it kind of looking like you didn't prove to me. I know I'm going to get attacked by that. I ain't worried about that. Don't none of y'all feed Brusseau. Yeah, you know what I'm saying? You understand? We got to do better, y'all. We got to do better. Because we got a long way to go, y'all, and we just not getting started. Let me tell you something, Parker, in your presence, I want to say this to you. I prayed and asked God to give me the access to come up here, y'all, sooner or later and speak. And God granted me the access. Now, don't get mad at me. It's called favor. Brusseau, it ain't got nothing to do with that. It's the favor of God. Thank y'all. I'm glad to see y'all. Y'all still looking good.
You, too. Thank you. All right.
I've seen a mayor since we've been going...
You're going to say, somebody, a mayor going to say, "Oh!" Somebody, a mayor going to say, "See, the old radio going to say, 'Why I'm beautiful, boy.'" But with me, he got to have them all the way.
All right.
I wonder if he yells at her.
That's awesome.
So we're old and new business now. Counselor Hoyt or Hilliard? Counselor Hoyt, you ready?
Yes, thank you. Certainly appreciate you all today. District 8, our ninth annual Education With A Purpose Cash Scholarship Program will conclude. We got to have a press conference next Wednesday, and that's on August 4th at 5 o'clock. And we have 32 young people that will receive from $1,000 to $600 to $500. Nobody getting less than $500.
Oh, wow.
So, and, but you all know I couldn't do it without partners. You know, we have many partners. I started naming specifically. And all this is, this is not public dollars. These are just friends of District 8 and kind of like what we do. And that brings our total in the nine, in the nine years we've had Education With A Purpose to well over $102,000 we've given to college-bound students. And I want to say, Counsel Abbott, thank you because over the years, you have supported us. And it has made a difference in the life of these young people. They going on to do great things. One of them going, well, several of them going to law school. And several have become authors, books and things. And so, but I want to say thank you to you because you believe in what we were doing. And I appreciate you even taking your own personal money and supporting us over the years. And so I really, really appreciate that. But I'm excited that we're able to do this for our young people. And of course, our funds are unrestricted because I realize that some young people don't make a decision to go to college because they don't have the basis needs. Everybody want to look nice. Everybody want to have things that other folk have when they go to college. And so, but most of them spending on their books because, you know, tuition don't cover everything. You know, you've got some other little incidentals that you have to pay. But I just want to say thank you to all our partners who have helped us out over the years. And this is probably something I'll probably continue even after I leave here is to try to see how we can help our young people go to college.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Parker. So we have some good news coming. Sixth Avenue may soon have a drive-through Travis Restaurant. And that's Travis, who has a Travis truck. He's going to possibly have a drive-through there. So I'm excited. So we'll keep you posted. And also, we're having a new coffee shop coming too on Sixth Avenue. And they'll be black-owned. Yeah, it's really cool. It's by a young man. I'm excited. Last week, I had the opportunity to feed the Washington K-38 staff and faculty at their retreat last week. It was a pleasure. We had Urban Cookhouse, and we had a lot of fun. Also, this is probably like my fourth announcement for vacancies on the Land Bank Authority of the City of Birmingham. Authority of the City of Birmingham, Stormwater Appeals Board and Solid Waste Authority Board. Uh, please send your resumes to me via email, crystal.smithman@birminghamal.gov by August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Also, we have two cleanups this weekend. At eight AM on Saturday, we will meet at Hemp Hill Elementary. This is for Arlington West End cleanup. Uh, we will have supplies and snacks and water for you. And then at nine AM, North and South Tissville and Woodland Park are joined together for a cleanup. If you are in South or North Tissville, you will meet at Memorial Park at nine. And for Woodland Park, which is my home neighborhood, we will meet at Spring Haven Park at nine AM and supplies and snacks and water will be provided then. And also, school starts next Tuesday. I want to keep our kids encouraged and everyone make sure to wear your mask and get vaccinated. Thank you, President Parker.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next budget and finance meeting will be held on August ninth, two thousand twenty-one at three, three thirty PM. Submissions are due by August fourth, two thousand twenty-one, by twelve noon. There are no exceptions, so please get all of your documentation together and submit it as required. The next Neighborhood Association meeting coming up in District Three is the Glen Iris Neighborhood, which will meet at six thirty on this coming Monday, the first Monday in August. So thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start out by thanking, um, the folks at Mount Mariah Baptist Church in Gate City for inviting me out on Sunday for their, uh, back-to-school event. Uh, it was good turnout and they were able to give, uh, book bags and, um, other items that the students, especially at Woodlawn and Oliver, uh, need. So I want to, uh, thank the pastor there for, uh, allowing me to participate in that. We do have two neighborhood meetings on the schedule for tonight, Fountain Heights and Crestwood North. I believe both of those are going to be, uh, either conference call or virtual, so please check with my office if you're interested in participating in those. Those Fountain Heights starts at six and Crestwood North starts at six thirty. I also want to mention that, um, there's a back-to-school, uh, event taking place at, uh, Park Place, uh, downtown, uh, near, across the street from Marconi Park on Sixth Avenue, uh, between, uh, Twenty-third Street and Twenty-fourth Street. There's sort of a grassy lot there. Uh, some of the community members are, um, gathering, will be gathering there on Friday, July thirtieth at five PM for, um, to distribute back-to-school items for, um, the kids, especially that live there in Park Place. And they are accepting, um, donations, uh, for that. And you can also contact my office to, to get more information if you would like to contribute. And then finally, uh, want to mention that we have a, uh, cleanup, um, initiated by the Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association. That will take place on Saturday, July thirty-first, starting at eight AM, going to about ten thirty, uh, AM. Uh, we will start at, uh, New Community Baptist Church. All you have to bring is yourself. We will have the safety vests, the grabber sticks, the bags, everything you need. We just need folks to show up and help us, uh, sweep through the neighborhood and, um, get it cleaned up. So, um, I believe that's all I have and thank you, Counselor Parker.
Counselor Williams, can we go to Counsel Hilliard?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, um, want to thank, you know, while we have given the administration, um, a lot of questions, I know that, uh, that there's a, there's been a, a great deal of cooperation, um, in terms of the ARP funding. When you hand a city, um, uh, two seventy-million-dollar tranches, there's a, there's a lot of ways that, that that could go. And, um, I've overall am, am very pleased at the cooperation between the nine of us on this dais as well as the entire administration. So thank y'all for being diligent with that because I know that, um, there might have been some councils and administrations in the past where, you know, we, there would have been some public fighting and, and all sorts of stuff when it comes to this kind of funding. So thank y'all very much for your diligence on that. And I'm, I'm overall pleased in the way that, that we've handled that collectively. As for District Two, we had our three neighborhood meetings last night, so this week we don't have any more for the rest of the week. And, um, and we're looking forward to the committee of the whole so we can see, uh, how quickly we can get some of those two-million-dollar projects out, out in the district. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Hilliard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, District Nine's announcements, uh, Economic Development Committee, Committee Meeting will be today at three o'clock PM, right here in this chamber at three o'clock. On Saturday, July the thirty-first, TC Counseling will be hosting their second annual bookbag drive and giveaway at the A.G. Gaston Boys Club that's located at forty-eight twenty-one Avenue W in Birmingham. Uh, also, our virtual town hall meeting will be tonight at seven thirty PM. Uh, we have, uh, P.E.P., uh, Edmond Reveal to, uh, who will be on our call tonight, so we're excited about that. You can call into five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine. Five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine. Uh, I also want to say happy birthday to my mother. She will be eighty-one on July the thirty-first. That's this Saturday. I am, I want to first say I'm so proud of mom. Uh, my mother still works. She has been working, uh, with, uh, she's been a foster care parent for over forty-five years and she loves what she does. She has two boys with autism and, uh, she has really worked with them and trained them. They, uh, when she got them over, uh, ten years ago, they couldn't even use the rest. They didn't, they didn't know how to go to restroom. And, uh, she's got them trained, they're out of diapers and, uh, and they can actually, one of them can actually talk now. So the minute he hears my voice, the first thing he says McDonald's, Burger King, waffles. So he wants it all. But I want to say to mom, you've been an excellent mother. I really appreciate the work that you do and, uh, I think that really those boys keep her young. So I'm very pleased to say happy birthday to mother, uh, uh, on, uh, July the thirty-first. So with that, Mr. President, it's District Nine time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Protem?
Thank you, Mr. President.
And real quick, happy belated birthday. Counselor Hoyt, you got to sing to it.
Happy belated.
I did, that's right.
Let's serenade the Protem. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Madam Protem. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, well, thank you all very much. When you get this age, you're just very excited just to be here. So thank you very, very much. The birthdays at this age are like a holiday. So thank you. I do want to start by thanking, uh, thank you to everyone that came out and volunteered and the citizens that were able to participate in our cleanup and those residents that brought paper goods or electronics during the recycling portion of our Love D Seven Environment Day. I was just very excited by the number of residents that came, the items that we brought to clean up our homes. And so I want to thank just a few people and of course, hold it to my head, not my heart, we don't get everybody. But I do want to thank council, PIO staff. Cody was there front and center, so I want to thank him for the coverage and making people aware. Pro-Tech Recycling, they actually brought two trucks out. We had one just for paper shredding and the other one for electronics. Residents were so excited, they've asked, can we do it again? And we certainly will. I want to thank the leadership of Germania Park, Jones Valley and the Oakwood Place Neighborhoods. Jones Valley actually joined in after we'd announced our first site, cleanup site. And so I'm just thankful to those residents and their neighborhood president and vice presidents for getting people out. Also like to thank Ms. Tasha Simone for one oh seven point seven. She, uh, did an excellent job of getting the word out and getting people out there to participate, to Be Grace Media and to also KBB. As has already been said, if you want to have a cleanup, we can provide those items to you. KBB gives us, um, everything that we need. And so if anyone wants to have a cleanup in District Seven, just call the office, two five four two four nine eight. We're happy to work with you and sponsor one. Um, I also like to reiterate Mr. Hilliard's guest tonight, Mr. Edwin Reveal. He's, um, a part of our Stormwater Division. I think he, um, actually supervises that. So I know we've had questions a lot about storms and ditches and our sewer. So, um, I'm happy to see that participation on your call tonight. So I'm going to repeat that again. That's five oh eight nine two four one three four nine. I'm hopeful that everyone will come back out and, um, listen to that. Five oh eight nine two four one three four nine. What time is this, sorry, Counsel?
Seven thirty PM.
Seven thirty PM. Well, uh, next to last thing, I would like to talk about the D seven hotline that is working. It's the twenty-four-seven hotline. We've had great participation and response where residents have wanted to follow up on their issues, report their issues. We will assist you with getting that to the three-one-one portal and getting that to the, um, mayor's attention and, um, his administrative staff. So we thank you. Want to thank Chief Sparks for all the work that's being done, uh, as far as trying to address the issues that we've been bringing to you. So that hotline is two zero five three zero four one seven nine seven. I'd be remiss if I just didn't stop and talk about one of the things that we did see when we were in the Jones Valley neighborhood cleaning up. And we went by a particular facility and there were just tons and tons of boxes, debris where obviously work had been done in this establishment and that trash had been left out for the city to pick up. So I just want to warn all of us and remind all of us, when we get a contractor, whether you're a business or a resident, and you have them to come in and do work, they just can't leave those materials as, uh, items for us to have to pick up later. And this required, uh, thanks to the Public Works, they did respond and come back out on a Saturday and picked that up because it was such an eyesore and a nuisance to the residents. And so now you've cost the city extra money in doing that. So I just ask residents to please, um, let's all work together when we hire individuals or when we see people out there, uh, to make sure that they follow our ordinances and our rules. The last thing I do want to make residents aware and, um, the Roosevelt City Community Center, that center is temporarily closed until needed reply, repairs are complete. The request for those repairs has been turned in. They're looking at it as a capital project due to the needed assessment and some of the extensive damage to the sewer there. And I believe that HVAC was also, has a problem, but I know the sewer problem. So, um, public, excuse me, um, Park and Rec and, uh, the mayor's staff, they're looking at that and working with that. So that center is temporarily closed, but as soon as we get a status on those updates, we'll be able to make you aware when that center will reopen. And I believe if I'm correct, school starts Monday, August second?
Third.
Third for Birmingham City Schools. So when we come before you on Tuesday, we'll have parents that are out there getting their children back and ready for school. I don't have the luxury of that anymore, don't have to wait in those lines and all that. But I do, uh, just say our, we want to wish our students well and the parents and the families that will be returning their children back to school. That's it for me, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. President Protem? Yes, sir.
Just had to follow up, uh, loads of that. When is it? I need to know.
Okay. Good, great, Counsel Hoyt.
Yeah, there was a, excuse me, a candidate forum that was, uh, scheduled. When is it?
Thursday, August twelfth.
Okay. First, um.
Presbyterian.
Presbyterian United Church. And so I just wanted, uh, you all to be aware so you can, um, either show up or not. But, uh, somebody sent that as an information piece there.
Okay.[1736.52]